All right, good evening. It's 6:30, so I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission. We have a roll call. We're short today.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Here.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Present.
Commissioner Tan?
Here.
And Chair Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioners Coomerly and Sherman have excused absences this evening, so we have a quorum of five commissioners.
Almost. Okay, if you'll rise, let's say the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is to welcome and swear in our new Commissioner, Kyrie Tan.
So Karen Hemphill, the city clerk, will do the honors.
So in front of you, I put a copy of the oath of office, and rather than me saying it and you repeating it, you can just get up and read it out loud.
Okay.
And then if you could sign it and give it to me.
Okay.
I, Kyrie Tan, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And this is subscribed and sworn to me this 23rd day of August 2012, Karen Hemphill, City Clerk. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
You can sign it and just give it to me.
Okay. And then you'll be official. Great. The next item on our agenda is the election of officers. And what I would like to suggest is that, partly because we're short-staffed, but also the way we have been operating up to now is that the officers have been elected and the gavel's been passed, but in actuality, what happens is that the Chair of the Planning Commission generally meets with the head of the Planning Department, City Attorney, before the meetings to get a rundown and understanding of what issues might arise. So it's kind of hard to have that conference and then hand the gavel over to somebody who hasn't been involved in that conference. So I would like to put it to the Commission whether it makes sense to have the officers elected and then take actual charge of the meetings and take office for the next meeting, for the next month. Are there any thoughts on that?
I would agree that that's a good idea. Is that acceptable?
Absolutely. In fact, that was when I was the Secretary of the Planning Commission in Oakland. That's what they did. They would elect their officers at one meeting, and then they would take office the following meeting, so they'd have a little bit of time to ramp up.
Okay. Well, should we do Chair and Vice Chair, one after the other?
Do it however you wish.
Well, I would like to nominate as the Chair Vanessa Coomerly, who's not here now, but who I understand would be willing to do this, and who has been chairing the General Plan and Zoning Update Committee and doing a good job with that.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Should we take a vote?
You can take a vote, or you can do it by, you know, without objection, by acclamation.
Are there any objections? Well, seeing no objection, we have a new Chair, starting officially next month at the next meeting.
All right.
Nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Buzz Cardoza, infamous on the Planning Commission, as Vice Chair. Very well-known to the vice world, Mr. Buzz Cardoza.
Oh, thank you very much for that positive recommendation.
Charlie, did you have?
Well, I was, I was going to nominate Commissioner Sherman, but I'm, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you, how you want, I mean, I'm happy to not make that motion and vote on this motion as well, so.
Okay, well, I'd second then Commissioner Cardoza. Are there any objections? No? Okay, we have a Vice Chair.
So that's by acclamation also, then. Moved by Commissioner Steinberg and seconded by Chair Donaldson. Okay?
Great.
Good. Congratulations, Commissioner Cardoza, and Commissioner Coomerly in absentia.
All right. So, rolling right along here, this is the time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone wishing to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, the action recap, the minutes from the last meeting.
Move approval.
Any adjustments?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, without objection?
Without objection. Do we have to note an abstention from Commissioner Tan, who wasn't here?
Yes, and actually, and also, the two Commissioners were absent, so it'll be four eyes, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to the Director's Report.
Right. All right. First, to let you know about recent City Council actions, of course, you didn't meet in July, so your last meeting was two months ago. So there are two months worth of council meetings to report on. The Council only meets once in July, so they've met three times since your last meeting. They did several things of interest to, I think, to the Planning Commission at their July 17th meeting. They held a study session on street trees, and they directed that the Planning Commission also hold a study session and have the same presentation and make recommendations to the Council on possible amendments to the urban forestry ordinance. So we have scheduled that study session for your next meeting on September 27th, after which the Council will consider your recommendations in October. The Council approved an RFP for design of pedestrian improvements on San Pablo Avenue at 43rd, 45th, and 47th Streets, which will be funded by a $748,000 Safe Roots to Schools grant from Caltrans. The Council also authorized the City Manager to accept a $4.2 million grant from Caltrans to partially fund the parking structure and the bus bays at the Transit Center. The Council approved using $6,500 of Measure B money for three bicycle fix-it stations at Doyle Hollis Park, Shorbird Park, and City Hall. And as we know, they reappointed Commissioner Moss and appointed Commissioner Tan to the Planning Commission for the next three-year term. The Council also approved the cleanup of the general, excuse me, of the zoning update steering committee roster that you recommended at your June meeting by redesignating Commissioner Coomerly from a resident member to the Planning Commission representative and eliminating the vacant positions on the committee. On August 7th, the Council approved or adopted the Schumann Design Guidelines and a corresponding amendment to the citywide design guidelines, which you recommended at your June meeting. And at their August 21st meeting, just this past Tuesday, they adopted an open-for-business pledge, which was advocated by the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, of which Emeryville is a member. This pledge basically touts the customer service orientation of the Planning and Building Department, so it was a little opportunity for us to toot our horn. Moving on to the zoning update, the next meeting of the Steering Committee will be next Thursday, August 30th. At that time, they'll be discussing the remaining provisions of the new planning regulations, namely signs, subdivisions, administration and permits, and definitions. And there will also be an opportunity to make any final comments or revisions to the first five chapters of the code. We are then holding a community meeting on the new planning regulations on Saturday, September 29th, from new, from, excuse me, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and that will be here in the Council Chambers. I hope to see all of you there. And then we have a joint Planning Commission and City Council Study Session on Tuesday, October 30th. That will be at 6:00 p.m. here in the Council Chambers. I believe you all know about that and have confirmed that date and time. Then the final meeting of the Steering Committee will be on Thursday, November 15th, following the Joint Planning Commission-City Council Meeting, and that'll be at 6:30 p.m., at which they will review the entire code and recommend its adoption and have a little celebration. The Planning Commission adoption hearing is scheduled for December 13th, and the City Council adoption hearing is scheduled for January 15th. I previously have emailed this schedule to all of you, so hopefully you have it. Please let me know if you didn't get it or if you need another copy. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions?
I was just noticing on the minutes of the prior meeting, we had continued discussion of landscaping plan for 1051 45th Street.
Right.
Has anything come up that, it's been two months?
Um, that is, that was, it was to come back to tonight, but the owner of the property indicated that they had a, another obligation. So they, at their request, it was continued to September. We did hold a meeting in our offices with all of the interested people, including the property owner, the next-door neighbor, and some of the tenants, and the designer, and we think we've reached an amicable solution to the situation, but we'll find out at your next meeting.
Great.
Great. Any other questions for Charlie? Okay. Well, the main item, our public hearing item has been canceled, so the main item on our agenda is the administrative item on the art.com roof sign. That's Arley's presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. So we are looking at an informational item on the art.com sign. I'm going to give you a little bit of history and review the sign plans, and then bring you up to speed on where we are with the situation. In August 2011, this Planning Commission approved the original art.com sign with conditions that limited the sign to one solid color per 24-hour period, with each sign being a different color if they desired, and with four exceptions per year that allowed multiple colors, but again, still no animation, so a static display. Those signs were 203 square feet in size each, and no condition of approval was added that regarded dimming of the sign. In February of 2012, art.com came back to the Commission requesting an amendment due to a change in their logo. So this resulted in a different appearance of the sign, but the same location. The new sign they were requesting was 212 square feet per sign, but the Commission required a reduction in size to 172 square feet, approximately. So looking at the location here, the sign is on 2100 Powell Street, which is part of the Watergate Office Tower area. And as you can see, Pacific Park Plaza is in a direct line of sight to the north sign, which, unless blow up, you can see, is on this side of the building. And there's another sign here facing south. This is an image of the sign. The sign itself is made up of a number of what they tell us are pucks for the LED lights. So they're small, kind of, look like, basically like a hockey puck, that have, I think, five LED lights on them each. And this sign itself, this pattern, is actually a very small display of all these pucks lined up inside the sign. These are renderings of the sign on the building, showing different colors, and a very large zoom in there. So to go to a little more history, the sign was installed, I believe, in late May, and in June, we began to have, received complaints about the brightness of the sign, especially at night. Art.com responded by dimming the signs and switching to the use of more saturated colors. We'd continued to receive complaints about the brightness, and a number of citizens requested that the sign was, would be shut off completely during nighttime hours. Art.com felt that that was unreasonable and stated that they were unwilling to do that. Art.com does point out that the framework that the sign rests on was actually existing when they installed their sign, because there was previously a Sebel sign in those two locations, facing north and south, on this building. It was, it came down, and there was no sign there for, I believe, a number of years between that, but the sign was there previously. So in, in light of this situation, art.com has suggested a possible solution of dimming their signs an additional 35% from the original brightness during the night hours of 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. Staff feels that, in light of art.com's compliance with the normal application procedure and the permits conditions of approval, that this is a reasonable compromise, and therefore agrees with the proposal to dim the sign. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask you a question? As far as the complaints, from what area are they coming from, and are they coming from one particular area or multiple areas?
I received one or two complaints in June about the brightness that were actually farther into the city. But since, since June, the primary complaints I've received are from Pacific Park Plaza. And I have primarily been in contact with Lori Carzen, who has been, I believe, kind of the point person for Pacific Park Plaza residents for this matter. And so I put her in touch with Mr. Terry Hill, who is the, I believe, the Vice President of Administration and Human Relations at art.com, at his request. And so they have been communicating but copying me on their emails since then.
Have you gone physically to Pacific Park Plaza just to see what the ramifications are?
I have not viewed the sign from Pacific Park Plaza, but I have seen it at night.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned they've agreed to reduce it a further 35%. Prior to that, what had they reduced it?
I am not sure what percentage they had reduced it. Yeah, I don't, I don't know offhand. I'm sorry.
So in effect, this is the first or the second reduction?
This, this proposal would be a second reduction.
But we don't know.
We don't know what percentage, correct. I'll just go back so you can see that.
So art, art.com, they control the, the sign, not the, the building owner?
I would assume that there is some kind of agreement between the building owner and art.com, but we have been communicating with art.com about the sign.
Was the Sebel sign white?
I believe it was. This is obviously during the daytime, but it does look like it is a white sign.
And that was, was neon channel letters?
Neon, yes.
Do you have a rendition of what it would look like with the further dimming?
I do not. Art.com did not provide that.
I'd like to say, however, in that regard, if those renderings of the sign that Arley showed you previously really don't give you any kind of a sense of how bright the light will be, so to try to render a dimming of it might not be very effective, since looking at those renderings, it doesn't look very bright in the first place here. It's hard to render brightness of a sign on a piece of paper or on a PowerPoint.
They would put a grid over it just to kind of...
Has there been any discussion of limiting it strictly to a white sign? Because the white then blends in with the other light that comes off of the building itself.
I have not heard of any discussion myself, but that is one possible option.
I believe there was some correspondence from art.com in response to someone who complained about the different colors, saying that they weren't willing to not use the different colors. I think that's part of their, I don't want to say advertising campaign, because it's not off-site advertising, it's a business identification sign, but that's, that's part of their branding, I think, is to have the different colors.
And I should mention, their original proposal, and they were very excited about this, was to have multiple colors moving across the sign at all times. So that was, that was part of the original proposal, which this Commission chose not to allow in the first place.
Right. Right. Any other questions for staff? Well, I understand there are a number of people from the public who would like to address this issue, so we have had speaker cards, which, it would be helpful if one signs in before speaking. I'm going to limit the speaking to three minutes apiece, and I'm not going to get the cards and the names. I think I'm just going to, people can...
We don't usually require speaker cards for the Planning Commission, so I didn't tell people they needed to fill them out.
But signing in?
But yeah, you can, you can come to the microphone and identify yourself, and then sign in after you speak. Is that right?
That would work. That'd be fine.
Okay, and each speaker will get three minutes?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lori Carzen. Down this way?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I'm not used to doing this. I'm Lori Carzen. I've been the point person, emailing with Arley and with Tony Hill from art.com. I've been a resident of Emeryville for 20 years, and so I saw the Sebel building, which it was originally, go up, and lived with that sign with no problem. There's not, I have not had a complaint in 20 years living in the building, but I do have an enormous complaint now. It's not just the brightness. It's also the garish color choices. Their hot pink, their hot orange, their hot green. I mean, it's all neon day-glow colors, and it, it's, yes, it certainly affects our view, but more than that, there's a glow that comes into our entire condo. So it reflects off the glass. If you have the television on, you're seeing art.com all over the place, and it's really a nuisance. You know, you want to have a nice evening in your condo, and you can't. There's this art.com sign. In the beginning, I was certainly wanting to be a good neighbor. I understand advertising and all, but very soon, there was a breakdown in communication when Tony Hill said, "I'm not willing to turn this off at night," or I'm, he basically stopped, and that's when Arley wrote to us and said, "I'll put it on as an informational item." One of the questions I have is, in the staff, Planning Commission staff report, it said that the owner of the building had required his sign to be white, and that if it was going to be any other color, it's, it needed to be approved by the owner before it was issued. I don't know, it didn't come up in this discussion, but it's definitely in the PDF file that I saw that, that mentioned that. I was, my mother-in-law passed away in May, and I wasn't here, and the day I got back and saw it, which was June 5th, I started writing. And at that time, Tony Hill let me know, "It is a little bright." I mean, he said it in the email, I have that. He said he had had other complaints prior to that, which meant it was in, within the two-week period that they had put it up. And Arley herself said it was bright. There's also someone on your, on your Commission that lives in the building who said, "We never thought it would be that bright." It's an LED light with a thousand lights. I don't think we've ever had a, a sign like that, but the thing is, is you can't even see what it reads until you get to about Ashby, if you're coming down the freeway, because it's this glow, this great big aura. It's a colored aura around it. So at this point, we have various, various suggestions, various, people have all levels of, of upset about this sign. And some people are very angry. There are people that, I certainly was one that wanted to work it out, find a solution. I don't trust the dimming, because he said he'd already dimmed it, and I, believe me when I tell you, I certainly cannot tell the difference. There are nights that it's very, very bright. There was one night where it was pulsating, and the other night, for one hour, it went off. And I cannot tell you how lovely that was. I think it was some problem. I think my time's up, and I'll give it to someone else. Thank you.
Okay. All right, just let me ask procedurally, Charlie, if we have questions, just general questions of the people who are affected by this sign, should, is it better to just wait till the end or after everyone's spoken?
You can ask them while they're speaking, if you wish, or you can ask them at the end. It's up to you.
Well, we'll wait till everybody's had a chance, I think.
Hi, I'm Brian Gross. I've lived in Emeryville at Pacific Park Plaza for 27 years. I have a degree, my background is, I have a degree in art history. I have had an art gallery in the city for 27 years. I've been involved in art and architecture projects throughout my entire career. So basically, my viewpoint is, the sign is a huge mistake. I think that the city has stumbled into something that they didn't, they didn't know what they were dealing with. As someone has pointed out, no one knew what a sign that high with that many LED lights would look like. Personally, I have another problem with the sign beyond the intensity of the lights, which is, I think that the sign marks the city in a certain way. I think it, because of the dominance of this sign and the electronic element of it, it now has tagged Emeryville. I mean, that is Emeryville now. So everyone driving down the freeway in either direction, this is what you get. And I personally have a problem with that. I think that Emeryville should not be tagged with this commercial thing. And I lived with no problem with the Sebel sign, so I know art.com has said, they tried to say it's, well, just another version of another commercial sign. It really isn't. This is something that's like Las Vegas. So I really urge the Commission to look at this seriously and take some steps to correct it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Please remember to sign in after you speak.
My name is Paul Gerhart, and I wasn't sure I'd be able to attend the meetings, but fortunately, I'm here. So there are a few additional things I want to say. First of all, I've owned property and lived in Emeryville since 1978, first at Watergate, and now our home is at Pacific Park Plaza. And I've personally witnessed and lived through and participated in all the changes in growth in Emeryville for 34 years now. For the most part, I feel all the changes in growth have been to the benefit of the residents and community and businesses. That's why you've really not heard from me before now. Now, I feel I really must express my concern and objection to a real eyesore in our city. The new art.com sign is a huge, ugly eyesore in our city. It's totally out of place and inappropriate in Emeryville. The sign looks like something you would see in Las Vegas, not in our community. The sign glows all different horrible garish multicolors all night long. The sign glows all different horrible garish multi-colors all night long, the sign is so powerful and bright that it intrudes into every room in our, our home, even with a blind shut at nighttime. It has destroyed the beautiful and subtle nightscape we residents at Pacific Park Plaza used to enjoy. I've read the correspondence that Mr. Hill says he has turned down the intensity, but he has not, the sign is just as bright as ever. This, this sign serves no public or commercial good, I just found out that Art.com is, Art.com is a poster company. Art.com's a poster company, it's not a hotel, it's not a gas station, it's not a restaurant trying to bring customers to their location, it's just a poster company. If the building at twenty-one hundred Powell Street was a hospital, there'd be need for a sign. A hospital emergency room might need, there might be a need for a sign like this, but not a poster company. It really doesn't make any sense to me. The sign's offensive, it's in bad taste for the whole community to view, so please, let's turn off and remove this eyesore and restore, restore the beautiful nightscape that we used to have. The south-facing Art.com sign is not an issue for me at this time, it's the north-facing Art.com sign is, is objectionable and needs to be reviewed, needs to be removed. So I'll just finish with two questions, I wonder how much electricity this sign uses, and what kind of carbon footprint this sign is leaving behind?
LEDs are supposed to be very efficient.
And who on this board wants Emeryville to be identified by a tacky poster company sign? So thank you for your concern and attention to this matter, and I hope none of you have to go home and look at this sign tonight like we do. Thank you.
I would note that Mr. Gerhardt did write a letter to the commission, which you all have in front of you.
Good evening, my name's Michael Millman, and I'm a ten-year resident of Emeryville. I've lived in Pacific Park Plaza, uh, the whole time, I own property in Watergate as well, and I support what everybody else has said, as I did the other night when I came to speak. Uh, my concern about the sign, um, involves property values, um, I'm pretty close to, as many of us are, realtors in the community, um, some of us have properties where we have tenants, uh, that are impacted by this as well, and it is true, when you have your blinds down, that the light does go through, you can actually see the light shining through. I also don't know whether or not it, it portrays the right image of Emeryville as a progressive city. At the same time, I'm not anti-business at all, I operate, I operate a business, sole proprietorship in Emeryville, and I also work for a major corporation in San Francisco. So, my suggestion, as we think through this, is to, the comment made earlier about, you know, considering making the color of the sign consistent with what was not a problem before in the Sebel building, that would seem to be a reasonable, um, reasonable solution, at least to myself, maybe to some others. Um, but the last thing that we want to have happen is what occurred back in, in the salad days of the real estate market, when we had a big sign in front of the building that, called Ditech, which is a mortgage company that's no longer in business, they had a sign, um, by the Denny's that was extremely bright, and I had tenants in the building at Park Plaza at the time who complained to me about that. Um, so I can imagine, some of the other owners, I know a lot of people who live in the building, who have tenants in the building, we're trying to keep the owner occupancy at, at appropriate levels, so that we can purchase property, and, and properties can be financed in an appropriate way. I think to the extent that this continues to be an ongoing problem, it's going to have some type of a bearing on that, because people who own property where their tenants are complaining are either going to sell their properties, um, I hope that's not the case, but we certainly don't want Emeryville, at the end of the day, to resemble Vaudeville, um, in any way. And so, to the extent that you can help us in thinking through a solution that's amicable for everybody involved, including the owners of Art.com, but most importantly, people who are paying property taxes, um, at much higher rates than, um, than comps would justify, if you know what I mean there, many of us are paying assessed taxes on assessed values, which are out of line with reality, so we're trying to make the best of it, and keep the city, and the, and the spirit of the city, um, appropriate for everybody.
My name is Carrie Waltski, and I am a seven-year resident of Emeryville and seven-year homeowner at Pacific Park Plaza, and past member of the board, and I'm president of the HOA board at Pacific Park Plaza, and, um, whether or not you agree with the aesthetics of the sign, I, I personally don't, and I agree with what's been said about the aesthetics. What you can't argue, uh, about is the public nuisance that's been created by this sign, pardon me, and the compromised quality of, of life or quiet enjoyment of our properties. So, I personally have had trouble sleeping, it's that bright, it's like the sun shining into your, into your unit twenty-four-seven, essentially. Um, I've had guests, as recently as last week, who, um, a guest was staying in my living room, uh, in the morning, she told me she couldn't sleep, she tried switching around, she ended up laying on the floor and putting a blanket over her head. So, um, I guess my question is, why are we discussing this now, in retrospect? Why were these potential, uh, restrictions, like making the sign white, or, or perhaps not LED, but something comparable to the Sebel sign, not discussed and put as restrictions prior to the approval, because it's hard to go back, um, now? But what I am proposing is that we are in violation, basically, of the restrictions that were set for the sign, because the sign is not supposed to cause, per what the board approved, glare or annoyance to, uh, any residences, and it is doing that. So I would like to propose, as a result, that we do something about it, and that the sign, the sign has not been dimmed, I propose that it's turned off in the evening, or dimmed to a, a light output that is comparable to what was there with the Sebel sign. The sign is not comparable in any way to the Sebel sign, and it is being compared to the Sebel sign by Art.com, but it's not comparable in aesthetics, in size, in light output, in any way. So, uh, let's see, I, I do think it's a major concern on property values and on our quality of life, and I think those are the, the major, major concerns for us, and we'd like to be good neighbors and work with Art.com, but I feel strongly the sign never should have been approved in the first place, so now we're just going to have to go back in and do the best that we can to come up with a solution, you know, in hindsight, I guess, or in, in retrospect, so, thank you.
Hello, I, I'm Stanley Haig, I've, uh, lived here in Emeryville, lived and slept and voted and paid taxes in Emeryville for about fifteen years, and I'm at PPP, the Pacific Park Plaza. I would agree with almost everything that's been said, I would, uh, like to clarify that all of the other, uh, signs which are in, in the neighborhood are really, uh, place-of-business locating signs, you know, hotels, service stations, and restaurants, and I think this sign is actually a commercial advertising sign, this is basically a billboard, there's no business being conducted with the public at the building, uh, it's a dot-com building, so I think it's, it's, uh, disingenuous to, to put it in the same category as, uh, as the Sebel sign, or the Holiday Inn sign, or the Chevy sign, or any of the other signs. Those signs also are all, uh, illuminated, backlit, translucent, plastic signs of very low intensity. This LED technology is extremely brilliant, you know, when this is at full power, you can see this sign for miles, although you cannot read it for miles. It, it's quite curious and ironic that this bright sign is illegible, uh, until you get to within about two-hundred yards of it, because it's so bright that the colors kind of blend, uh, and, and obscure the, the legibility. I want to second, uh, Brian Gross's notion that this is really not in keeping with, uh, with the new Emeryville. Uh, I, I brought along a Rotten City t-shirt, uh, you know, that we're all familiar with the Earl Warren's characterization of, of Emeryville, and this committee, commission, and, uh, and your predecessors have done a fantastic job, and we've got things like the Novartis campus and the Pixar, Pixar campus, and, and so many things here, which are so tasteful and positive, uh, I fear that allowing this sign could be the beginning of, of deterioration of that. This is prime real estate for advertising, certainly, because of the traffic, but we shouldn't give in to that temptation, say, "Well, you let Art.com have a, an advertising sign, why don't we get a bright sign?" Uh, we, we want to take advantage of the thousands and thousands of drivers that go through this area. There is a precedent for LED signs being, uh, removed, uh, or greatly toned down, there was a huge, bright billboard, animated billboard over in the Port of Oakland as you got off of the Bay Bridge, that was a big disturbance, even a hazard to navigation, it lit up the entire bay, that was, uh, closed down, and we, and the, uh, Ditech sign that was in the parking lot of the PPP was taken down too. They were, they're really, it's a total new technology that is extremely, uh, offensive, and, and I think that ought to be grounds for reviewing this, and, and maybe backtracking.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, I am a fourteen-year resident of Emeryville, and this sign is very, very, um, offensive to the city of Emeryville, as Brian already alluded to, but I wanted to share the personal experience, you know, at the end of the day, you come home, and my unit is directly below the, the sign, so I'm at nineteenth floor, right at the tip of the building, and so that sign, you know, I want to sit down and look at TV or look at the view, I cannot do either. First of all, the sign hits directly the lights, and also, when you want to look outside to look at the Golden Gate or anything, you can't really see anything else, but also because of the angle, it hits the bedrooms as well, so even at the bedrooms, we have to make everything very dark. A, a question was asked earlier, how many units are affected? Technically, thirty-eight percent of the units in PPP are affected by the sign, so if you look at everything that's face, um, south-facing and anything west-facing, plus the one unit at the tip, so that's thirty-eight units, so it's impacting a lot of units, and I want to reinforce the question of value, the value, if, let's say I want to sell the unit, I have to disclose this Art.com as a, um, as a problem that a potential buyer may have to face, so again, so the property value, there's going to be some, um, a concern. With respect to business, I understand the business concerns, I'm the CFO of a biotech company, and, which I hope to bring to Emeryville at one point, but I don't see a whole lot of brand value that Art.com can be getting, especially by disenfranchising a number of its residents. Thank you.
Could you clarify, please, is it thirty-eight percent or thirty-eight units?
Thirty-eight percent.
So how many units is that all?
There are twenty-one units, there are twenty-one units, so if you look at one wing and one this way, plus the tip this way, that's eight units, so eight divided by twenty-one, is algebra.
Twenty units.
Thank you, Chris.
Are affected.
Yeah.
Two, two-twenty?
Our major...
Um, you would have to come back up to the microphone if you're going to, but, next person, well, okay.
One point, our, our neighbor, Avenue sixty-four, is all rental, those people don't have a real stake in it, they don't complain the way owners would, but a, a large portion of that residential area, which at some point may also be condominiumized, uh, is also affected. I, I've walked the property, and I can see that they're, they may not complain, but at some point, they are going to be impacted by it, but they're renters.
Renters have rights too, so...
I'm Chris Owens, and I live at Pacific Park Plaza, and I've lived there for twenty-eight years, and I served on this planning commission for twenty years, so, uh, I have a great deal of schadenfreude right now, I want you to know, this is nice to be here, and I understand you have a problem, and I think the main problem you have is the fact that nobody was really aware of how the sign would really, how strong it would actually be. So let me tell you, when I leave my building now, it takes me half an hour, I get stopped by every person in that building, I'm on the board, have been for many, many times in years, and I get stopped by people complaining about it. It is absolutely a total, complete problem for the real estate values of Pacific Park Plaza, and frankly, any one of you, if you'd, I personally am not affected by it, I live on the other side, but we have several people here who would love to have you come to their unit and look at it at night to see how it's really impacting. It is really, in all my years in the city, I've never seen anything that's been as atrocious as this particular sign, so I don't know what you can do about it, you know, this, they have another, we have another meeting scheduled with the city council, they put us on the agenda for September fourth, so we will be back, but anything you all can do, you know, to try and, uh, mediate this or fix it, would be great. Thank you.
So Charlie, this is discussion, we're not voting, we're not making recommendations to the city council?
After you hear testimony, you can then have discussion about what course of action you might wish to pursue. I should also note, the, um, agenda item at the city council that Ms. Owens mentioned is supposed to be a report from me to the council about what you did tonight.
Okay, one other question, do we have light pollution standards in, in this region that would be impacted by a sign with LED lighting?
Well, we have some rather, uh, nonspecific provisions in our code that generally talk about glare, not in this particular area, but these are citywide standards.
Sorry, anyone else?
Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
I just have one other comment I wanted to add to my earlier comments, and that is that, um, to the extent that the owners of Art.com are reasonable business people, um, I think all of us at Pacific Park Plaza and anybody else who's been affected by this sign, I would, I would submit to you that drivers driving by the sign on both directions probably get a little distracted, just like when you come off the Bay Bridge and you see that huge sign. I would submit to you that, in the event that we find that Art.com continues to not want to work with us, there are things that, that we may do, um, with respect to Art.com in the form of telling ten people, to tell ten people that Art.com is compromising our quality of life, and also impacting our, our, our investments, uh, in real estate. Um, I used to work in the art and framing industry for fifteen years, I have a lot of contacts in that industry, and we want this to be an amicable solution at the end of the day, and, uh, we would like this problem to go away as soon as possible, so to the extent that you can help us think that through and, and resolve this based on everything that you've heard, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well...
One more comment too, and this is not meant to be antagonistic or, or threatening, but, but at the city council meeting, the city attorney acknowledged that to, to back away from this commission and the, and the, uh, city council's, uh, permit for this sign might be costly, there might be litigation, it's difficult to back away, but as you've heard, many people are concerned about, uh, their, the losses that they may suffer, and so I think that any consideration, like, "Well, let's leave it alone, because we don't want to get involved in any kind of lawsuit," there's the other side, that, that those of us who feel we've been injured might also be interested in, in litigation, so I don't want you to think it's just one-sided, that your only risk is dealing with Art.com, you might be dealing with somebody else. Not, not a threat or anything, but it is balanced, you know, and there, there are threats from both sides, it's not just a one-sided thing, you know?
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Uh, we, we're limiting to three minutes.
Each person speaks for three minutes.
And I think we've got a...
I have one question, and the buzzer didn't go off when I spoke.
Okay.
You, you can't bank your minutes, sorry. You can't bank your minutes.
Can't bank them?
I don't know, Chair Donaldson, do you want to hear?
Yeah, you can ask, quick, please.
Okay. I, I would just like to ask the, the planning commission how this sign was approved, if, if there's some history on why these, why there was no view testing, um, for this sort of unprecedented technology in a city like this, where we have a history of being forward-thinking with zoning, why could something like this happen, and why wasn't there proper testing prior to the approval? And why wasn't there proper testing prior to the approval?
We'll address that in the discussion. I want to first ask if there's anybody on the commission who has questions for the speakers that have come up so far, just in general, about the impact of the lighting. Or the, okay.
Okay. And I'll sit down. But the one other thing I wanted to add is that we've started a petition with the solution that I had mentioned previously. We have obtained a number of signatures and will continue to do so. So, you know, we just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Yes, and in response to your question, I think that, no pun intended, the intensity and the garishness of the sign blindsided us, that we did not anticipate that it was going to be that bad. We had seen that there was a sign there for many years previously that was an illuminated sign, that didn't have any problems. And I think that with the technology, the dimmer discussion was had, and the applicants, we asked that there, whether there were dimmers, and the applicant assured us that there, it was dimmable. So we assumed that that was something that could be addressed as time went on. So here we are, and we will try to come up with a reasonable solution that addresses these problems, because clearly this has been causing problems for people. And what I would like to ask is, I'd like to ask either Charlie or Mr. Mittel, what are possible approaches or options might be to address this, other than?
First of all, I think everybody needs to appreciate that art.com did obtain a permit lawfully. And so to, you know, to, I think everybody needs to also appreciate that the city is obligated to proceed in a manner that's respective of due process of law. So we, they're entitled to a fair process, so the resolution of this issue will likely take some time. So there isn't going to be an immediate solution unless, of course, art.com willingly just turned off the signs. But I don't suspect that's going to happen, but who knows? If you look at the conditions of approval for art.com, there's Section 1D, and it provides that operations on this site shall be conducted in a manner that does not create a public or private nuisance, or otherwise violate the Emeryville Municipal Code. So there's one limitation on their permit. And then secondly, there's a provision in your municipal code, which is in your zoning provisions. It's Section 9-4.59.9, and you don't have it in front of you. And that is performance standards that I believe Mr. Bryant was referring to earlier. And subsection C of that, that section provides that flickering or intrinsically bright sources of illumination shall be controlled so as not to be a nuisance in residential or commercial districts. So there's another limitation on your ability to operate that sign. Then Article 87 of Chapter 4, Title IX of the code, and that is part of your zoning, what we refer to as your zoning ordinance, does provide a procedure to modify a permit for cause. And the procedure, then, Article 87 refers you to Article 92. And Article 92 is, speaks to procedures to revoke a permit, but it also includes modification. And Section 9-4.92.3, subsection A, provides the grounds upon which a permit may be modified or revoked. And subsection 3 provides that the use or facility for which the permit was granted is so conducted or maintained as to be detrimental to the public health or safety, or as to be a nuisance. And subsection B of that same provision then provides that an action to revoke or modify a permit may be initiated by order of the city council or the planning commission, and the order shall set forth grounds for revocation or modification. So one of your options that you have before you, if the commission believes that the complaints that you've heard tonight can be understood to allege that the brightness of the sign constitutes a nuisance, then the commission could direct staff to come back at your September meeting to consider the adoption of an order setting forth the grounds for modification. And if that order was then adopted, the order would set forth a subsequent date for a hearing to take place before this body, where you would take evidence. So individuals that were here tonight, if they wanted to appear, they could appear. They would ask to be, to provide testimony under oath, and there would be the taking and presenting of evidence before the planning commission. And then at the conclusion of the hearing, the commission would then, on the basis of the evidence that was presented, you'd make a finding regarding the alleged violations. You'd either sustain them or reject them, and essentially make a recommendation to the city council to modify the permit. Thereafter, the city council would consider the record that was created and established before the planning commission, any further testimony from art.com and others, and then they would take action. So that's one set of processes that you could, or one process, I should say, that you could consider. Alternatively, you could wait and see what, you have the letter from art.com, where they are indicating that they intend to further dim the light, let that happen, although I, you know, I don't have any knowledge about how or when that's going to happen. So, you know, it would be hard to gauge what the effect of that is, since we don't know when or, you know, when that was to occur. And so you could wait until next month and see what happens, and allow the residents to come back and say, yea or nay, it was, you know, they dimmed it and that's, that's great, or they didn't, and, or they did dim it and it's not sufficient. So, you know, that's, or you could say, you know what, we don't believe there's any problem, and, you know, do nothing. So that's also there.
Could I ask you a question, not being an attorney? Would quality of life or diminishing of quality of life be construed as a private nuisance?
Yes, and I believe, I know the one gentleman was referring to taking sort of matters into their own hands. Certainly, you know, the residents could maintain a private nuisance action if they wanted to. Only a, as I understand it, only a governmental agency can maintain an action for a public nuisance. So, but certainly individual property owners have the right to, if they wanted to, bring an action against art.com for maintaining a private nuisance and have it removed or modified somehow by a court. Yes, they could proceed.
I think the issue is bigger than that, though. I think it's the precedence of using LED lighting in the fashion that it's being used, and the fact that we underestimated the impact of this lighting.
Commission?
We, we did something that we thought was, in all fairness, a good amenity, and it backfired. And I think we have to reconsider what this does to our general lighting ordinance and future sign permits. It's not just one permit, even though this is pretty heavily affecting 38% of the population there. I think it's got more ramifications, though.
I think the, sort of the concerns you're having would be something that you would consider in the context of hearing, you know, the evidence that gets presented to you if the commission goes down that path and reaching a determination. So I think certainly those are valid concerns that you have.
Well, and if I hear you correctly, Commissioner Steinberg, you're speaking about the larger issue of other signs in the future, and that, that's a different issue, or a separate issue. And that, I think, is appropriate to consider in the context of, as luck would have it, the total overhaul of the zoning ordinance that you're involved in right now, or soon to be involved in. And in fact, the zoning update steering committee at their meeting next Thursday night will be considering the sign regulations. And just by coincidence, staff has put in those draft regulations a provision that high-rise and roof signs shall be dimmable, whether it's in the conditions of approval or not. But that's, like I say, that's a different topic from what we're here to discuss tonight.
So as a group tonight, are we going to make a recommendation? As a group? I'm not speaking for myself, but we're a body of some very bright people.
I think we should. I think first, I want to get a reading on whether there's a consensus that there is a serious problem here.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. So it seems, Commissioner Moss, where are you going to?
Oh, I just, I have another question for the city attorney. So the issue of colors came up during the public comment period, and so I just, I have a question. It's, it's my understanding that kind of requiring use of color, of particular colors in signage that may differ from corporate colors or things like that is kind of legally tenuous. And I just, you know, this sign is kind of unique because it uses several colors, and I'm not, I'm not really sure, you know, kind of what art.com's corporate colors or what their logo normally looks like, but I just, I was wondering if you could kind of address that issue.
I'm not aware of any entitlement to utilize colors. I mean, I believe a city or a planning commission, in terms of undertaking design review of a sign permit, or, you know, it's within their power to, you know, limit the color usage of signs. I know we've done that actually quite consistently on some other projects, so I'm certainly not aware of anything that constrains our ability to say, no, you can't have a colored sign. It has to be, you know, white.
I can give you a couple of examples. Bank of America upon San Pablo Avenue asked for permission to install a red sign, which is their corporate color now, I guess. And we said, no, that's too garish. We want just a plain, you know, white background. They went ahead and installed a red sign anyway, and we made them take it down and replace it with the sign that you see there now. Also, the other three Watergate office towers, this was before you were on the commission, Commissioner Moss, but there is a master sign program for the other three Watergate towers. It doesn't include this building, because this building is a different owner. And the commission, this was, actually, this wasn't the staff recommendation, this was the commission decision, that the signs that are permitted at the tops of the other three towers have to be individual letter, white-only signs, in order to be approved at a staff level. A master sign program allows staff to then approve subsequent signs that come in that are conforming to the master sign program. And what the commission said is, we'll allow staff to approve white signs that are individual letters, but if it's anything else, if it has color, or if it's not individual letters, it has to come back to the commission. So there is some precedent for regulating the color of signs.
Happened to the 3A sign, which I thought we approved some time ago. It never went up.
It never went up? I wasn't aware of that.
No, I've never seen it.
Oh, I don't know. I'll have to ask. Yeah, that's an, that sign had to come back to the commission because it wasn't a white, individual-letter sign.
Charlie, the uniqueness about this sign application is that it's on a high-rise building, and it's so prominent. Every other sign you see is usually at a, at a 10 or 12-foot height limitation. This sign is way out there. So it's really broadcasting its brightness for a greater, greater distance.
Right.
This is a very unique application.
Well, in the new draft planning regulations, which the commission will be seeing in October, October 30th, and which the steering committee has already seen, or actually, the sign part you'll be seeing next week, they will be seeing next week, it actually identifies a high-rise identification sign such as this as a separate sign type. And so this is, signs on the tops of tall buildings like this would have their own separate set of regulations.
Will you be able to describe the intensity of the light in some fashion?
Well, the draft regulations do have the provision that it'd be dimmable. It doesn't get much more specific than that, but we could make it more specific.
Is there a standard we could set for what the intensity of any sign would be?
I'm sure there is. You know, none of us are light intensity experts, but I'm sure there is probably a way we can figure out to regulate and measure those things, just the same as you regulate and measure noise.
I think there's going to be extensive discussion on that at the committee meeting, and I think there'll probably be extensive discussion when it comes to the joint meeting, and we need to work this out, clearly.
So what, what is staff's understanding of the, when art.com says that they intend to reduce the brightness of the sign by 35%, what, do you know what that means exactly? I mean, 35% of what is it? 35% of the power output, or 35% of the actual brightness, or how? I'm just curious about that.
Short answer is, we don't know.
Public, public speaking is over, Brian.
He has an answer. I have an answer as well.
Anybody who owns an LED flashlight knows that they, when the voltage drops, you can dim it, and then it goes off. So when you say the light source must be dimmable, LEDs can only go down to a certain, when you get to the certain voltage, then it breaks off. So they're not infinitely dimmable. So you say, oh, well, it's dimmable, but it can only be dimmed to 35% of its maximum intensity, and maximum intensity might blow you off the map. So, you know, just to say that a light is dimmable is insufficient. You really have to be measuring candle power or something.
You have to either be speaking at the microphone, or not one or the other.
I would note, however, that you could turn off 35% of the bulbs.
Yes, okay.
In my last, in my last communication with Tony Hill via email, and you were privy to that early, when I said, you know, he said that he had dimmed it already, 35%, and I wrote back and said, it's not, we, it's, we just don't see anything being dimmed. I mean, it didn't look any different to us. Maybe to him it did, but it didn't in our units. And so it was in that communication that he said, you know what, I'm not, I asked him to turn it off, and that's when he said he didn't want to. But he had already, he said, dimmed it, but we didn't see the difference. So I don't know what another 35% will do, but it's as much about the color as the dimming, you know?
And was that white light? Was that colored light?
Sometimes it's white. It changes at midnight, so it can go from hot pink to green to blue to orange to yellow. It changes at midnight every night to a different color, and there's a rotation of some kind. And when it's white, it's still too bright, but the white is the most livable color of any of the colors that they've chosen. They showed you primary colors. We've never seen primary, except for red. They're all day-glow, bright neon colors.
Okay. Okay. Well, in my opinion, the light is creating a nuisance for a good number of residents in Emeryville in a couple of buildings. And I think that I would, I don't know whether we need a motion, or whether we just need a consensus that we should direct staff to bring this back to our next month's meeting for an order to proceed with a nuisance process, if this is not resolved between art.com and the residents.
Well, I think one of the major issues, and they've said here, is that there should be no color. Should be white, among, among other things.
And perhaps it should be turned off at certain hours of the night, because it's a dot-com company. They're not driving, I know, we're stepping on their right to do business and advertise and signage, but.
I guess my point is, those, these types of suggestions are really, really things that you ought to be thinking about after you've had your, one, if you are going to, you know, direct staff to come back with an order after you, and so if you do that, and then you issue the order, and then you hear the testimony, if then you are convinced that you do have an actionable grounds to, or grounds to take some action, then I think you get into those sorts of discussions about, you know, turning it off at a certain time of the night, or limiting to certain colors, or hopefully by then will have some greater detail about the ability to dim the lights. What does that mean? You know, those sorts of things. So I don't want you to necessarily prejudice your position at this early stage before you hear all the evidence. So I don't want you to necessarily prejudice your position at this early stage before you hear all the evidence. So that's my caution.
Okay, that caution is well taken. I think it's just important that art.com understands sort of the, the direction that the planning commission senses going of, just so that in terms of their process of negotiation or figuring out what might be a reasonable solution, that they understand that we're going to go forward with something.
We will obviously have to put this on your September agenda. It'll read, you know, "Consideration of an order to, you know, commence a proceeding to modify their permit." Art.com will be, you know, will be obligated to provide them notice in advance of that meeting. So certainly that will go forward, and they will know that the planning commission and the city is looking into this and taking it seriously.
Is there any, any other comments or any concerns from the commissioner?
Well, I don't, I mean, I recognize that this is, I mean, it's obviously a serious problem by the amount of speakers that we've had. But at the same time, I'm, I, I mean, my, I'm still hopeful that this can be worked out without us taking action. And so, you know, I would, I mean, I don't know that I would support putting this on our next agenda just without having, you know, without knowing whether this additional 35 percent dimming is going to make a difference or without knowing whether the art.com is amenable to limiting their color choices or, you know, without, I just feel like there's a lot of things that could be done between, I mean, you know, definitely, I think the, if this goes unsolved, the, you know, I would definitely support the commission taking action, but I'm, I'm just not certain that, that we're there yet.
Well, we wouldn't be there at September. It would be just noticing this process. It wouldn't be heard until October, and then it would have to go to the city council. So we're talking after Octo, after the end of October. So even if everything had to be resolved in that manner, we're talking several months. If we say, try to work it out and come back next month, that kicks it over to December or January where it's dark a lot of the time, and people are going to be dealing with that light in their, in their residences for long hours when it's dark at 5 o'clock and the thing is shining on your living room and your bedroom.
Without some specific measurement ability to know what it is now, what is, you know, it has to be scientifically determined that 35 percent is 35 percent less bright. And I don't know who measures that or how it could be measured, but that's, you know, crucial.
And the key to this is that there is the opportunity for art.com over a period of the next weeks, months, whatever, to figure out a solution that will work, that's amenable to people, that will resolve this, so.
May I suggest that if it's the will of the majority of the commission, that you could put this on your next agenda as consideration of an order to initiate the proceedings for modification. And then if the issue is resolved before your next meeting, you don't have to act on that order.
That's right.
Let's do it. I'm supportive of that. I didn't understand the process for initiating the order, so.
Yeah, the next, and I should just clarify for those who are here that assuming this goes on the next agenda as consideration of an order to initiate a process, that is not the time for testimony about how, you know, good or bad the sign is or what the solutions are. Although the commission will probably want to take some testimony about whether or not they should initiate this process. But the real hearing on the sign and any modifications to be made to it would be at a subsequent meeting, not at the September meeting.
But I wholeheartedly hope that art.com makes some efforts to resolve this without having to go through a process like that. So if that happens, we would be delighted to take it off an agenda.
So is it the consensus of the commission to have this on your next agenda as for the order to initiate this process?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. We hope that we get this resolved quickly and to everybody's satisfaction. And thanks for your time in coming to explain what's going on. So we have one more item on our agenda, which is just commissioner comments. Thank you very much. I just want to say welcome to our new commissioner, and I hope that...
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
I think your knowledge and your expertise is going to be really useful. If you had been here, maybe we wouldn't have gotten LED lights.
I definitely have a lot of thought on LED lights now, more than I did before.
Thank you very much.
Any other commissioner comments?
Nope. Adjourned?
Nope.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.